Good morning. We're here for our weekly board session in the Senator hearing room at 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon. And if you'll join us, we always start our board sessions with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's kind of nice to be sitting over here again.
Oh, yeah, you look good.
Thanks.
Uh-oh, he's in charge now. Look out.
This could take a while.
Yeah, this is still striving for perfection again. And so, we have no public, nobody signed up for a public comment this morning, so go right into our consent agenda, if you would, Commissioner.
I will, as soon as I find these glasses. Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. Under Business Services, we approve recommendations for the following: Establish and adopt one classification, Information Technology Deputy Director; uphold pay grades for six classifications: 661 Network Analyst 1, 662 Network Analyst 2, 663 Network Analyst 3, 668 Database Administrator, 669 Database Administrator Senior, and 674 Information Technology Project Manager; and adjust the upward pay grade for Classification 654 Information Technology Manager. And Juvenile, approve Amendment Number Three to the Contract for Services with Justice Benefits Incorporated to extend the term through January 31st, 2019, and receive $50,000 in revenue. Public Works, approve the intergovernment agreement with the Oregon Military Department for $144,874 for the Emergency Management Performance Grant through June 30th, 2018.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
No, I should have took a little work and maybe we'll get an explanation somewhere of what's all going on in IT, if these are new people or just new identifiers. Go ahead, would you?
Mr. Chair, we're just revising the whole series of pay grades in IT.
Okay. So anyway, no.
Making them, well, it's more than just the salaries, it's really the definitions and duties of the positions.
Thank you.
Great. So we have motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll move on to our action items, speaking of information technology. Scott, you're here. Ken, Scott, you want to come on up? This is Consider Approval of a Purchase Order Contract with Surium Networks for $285,046.24 for PBX Upgrade Services at Courthouse and Health Facilities. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners and Acting Commissioner, Chair. This morning, we're here to-
Thank you, I'm glad you noticed that I just act the part.
I just, I wanted to make sure that we recognize the importance of the role. This morning, we're here to seek final approval on a telephone upgrade. It actually is an upgrade that only upgrades a portion of the county's telephone systems. It will replace both the health and courthouse phone switches. It's a, it's a, something will extend the life of its system, five to seven years out is what we're looking at, as well as actually replacing the voicemail system at, as whole. The total cost of this whole endeavor is $320,000 with the recent supplemental we just had in hand, and we're looking for your approval.
Ken, you have anything to add?
He did a great job.
Mr. Chair, I think Scott ought to explain to you what's happening in the telephonic area, because this is going to change in the future. I mean, you talk about seven years, but it may change a lot before then, so maybe you could explain that, Scott.
Yeah, absolutely. The technology has shifted, it actually shifted about a decade ago. It's something that's more digital, it's known as voiceover IP. It's very commonplace today. The county is a bit behind with the fact that we're using equipment that's, that certainly is legacy, and the industry is consolidating, which means the number of vendors that will support the system we have is shrinking. So what we're doing right now is really kind of extending the life of what's in place, and certainly within our five-year roadmap plan, we will have to look at actually doing an overhaul of the system kind of end-to-end.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
Voiceover IP is really sending your voice over the network, so that in itself can create problems. If your network goes down, you don't have any telephones, and that would be a problem for the Sheriff's Office, clearly. But when, part of the plan will be to take care of that, that problem, and we'll move forward with it eventually, I think.
Certainly have to have redundant systems, backup systems that, that work when you go to that.
Right.
Yeah. Any other, yeah, Sam?
Well, just one minor question, I just didn't understand, does this affect all of our voicemails, or just in the courthouse?
It does, in fact, affect the entire voicemail system. The actual telephone switch aspect of it only affects about a third of our entire telephone base, so it's, it's, one part is, is only representative of hardware for about a third of the departments and campuses. The other voicemail component is end-to-end for the entire county. We do not see any, in that process of any loss as we do a transition to the new system of existing voicemails, if that's part of the concern.
All right.
Good?
Yep.
All right.
So, Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do approve Purchase Order Contract with Surium Networks for $284,046.24 to upgrade services at Courthouse and Health Facilities.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Would you check my voicemail when you get back to the office?
Sure, anytime.
They need to put a pager on me every time somebody leaves me a voicemail. All right, so we are going to, I think, if it's okay with staff, I'm going to open a public hearing, I do them both.
You can wait till 9:30.
Oh.
We have a problem.
So we will, we will take a-
I could have asked a few more questions, I couldn't think of it.
You have any discussion you want to talk about, or are we going to just take a recess?
I think we just recess.
Yeah, okay. We have a public hearing at 9:30, so we will recess until then. Okay, we are back from our recess, and it's 9:30. We're going to open a public hearing. We're actually going to open both public hearings at the same time. Public hearing to consider the removal, the dedication of Mater Dolores Cemetery, and public hearing to consider the vacation of all public streets, alleys, and walkways created by the plat of the Mater Dolores Cemetery. So Phil, you want to come up and kick us off? Phil Jones from Marion County.
For the record, my name is Phil Jones, I'm with the Marion County Department of Public On July 17th, 2017, a petition was filed with Marion County from Earnmar Incorporated requesting the removal of the dedication of Mater Doloresa Cemetery and to vacate all streets created by the plat of this cemetery. Petition states that the cemetery property is located within the Marion Estates Senior Living Community Property owned by Earnmar Incorporated. Petition also states that this cemetery does not house any remains, the public roads within the cemetery have not been developed, and dedication and removal, removal and vacation of this cemetery is necessary to clear title to this property in order to obtain funding from Marion Estates. Mater Doloresa Cemetery is a 0.62 acre parcel of land which was created on April 6th, 1964 by a plat recorded in Volume 21, page 47 of the Marion County Book of Town Plats. Cemetery contains 84 lots with six grave sites per lot, surrounded by public alleys or walkways ranging from two and one-half feet to seven feet in width. A 16-foot wide public roadway and walkway combination runs through the east-west centerline of the cemetery property, ending at a 30-foot radius cul-de-sac at the west end. The approximate location of the cemetery is adjacent to the east end of Division Street in the center of Marion Estates Senior Living Community Property. A search of the surveyor's office reveals no record of any previous dedication removal or vacation of this cemetery. Petition states that there are currently five residential buildings owned and operated by Marion Estates on the cemetery property, with the remaining property used as common space for the residents. A visual inspection of the cemetery property was made confirming the existence of these residential buildings, along with an access road and a portion of a parking lot. In this aerial photo here, it's about in the center of the photo, and in a, I tried to outline a rather, a yellow rectangle that shows the approximate location of, of the cemetery, which does show the buildings, a, an access road, and I'll say the southwesterly portion of the parking lot. Here I have a, a photo that is at the west end of the approximate area of the cemetery that shows that it is currently being, it's been developed, and it shows the, the street that goes through there, and then with some of the, with the buildings that are pretty much in the area. And this is also a photograph at the, at the east end, looking back to the west, also showing a portion of the parking lot and the, of the access road as well. Petitioner provided a copy of a letter by Weddell Funeral Home Incorporated stating that in October of 1982, all bodies buried in Mater Doloresa Cemetery were disinterred and moved to St. Boniface Cemetery in Sublimity. Petitioner also provided copies of permits issued by the Oregon State Health Division to disinter, transport, and reinter the remains of 11 bodies that were buried at the time in Mater Doloresa Cemetery. And late yesterday, I received a letter from Margaret Gander Voe, who is the, whose attorney's office represents Santee Partners, who is working with Earnmar Incorporated, who requested that, this, this information is more background information, which may give you some greater context as to this matter, and I would like to enter this into the public record and give you copies of this at this time. On January 3rd, 2018, Public Works Department received two letters from the Oregon Commission on Historic Cemeteries, which is a part of the Oregon State Parks and Recreation Department.
I'm sorry, what was the date, Phil? Sorry.
On January 3rd, 2018. These letters state that Mater Doloresa Cemetery is a historic cemetery, and that the area falls under state archaeology laws, so that any future development which, that may occur within that cemetery area would require consultation with the Historic Cemeteries Commission to develop a burial discovery plan for all ground disturbing work. However, since the, the area in and around Mater Doloresa Cemetery has already been developed and is now being used for other purposes, the Commission on Historic Cemeteries is not opposed to the removal of the cemetery dedication.
May I stop you there? Do you have copies, do we have copies of those letters in the file?
Yes.
That's, okay.
Yes, you do. And there were no other objections to the proposed dedication removal or vacation that had been received prior to this meeting. There is no fiscal impact created by this proposed cemetery-
I got it.
-dedication removal and, uh, street vacation, and there are no impacts to county departments or external entities. So it is a recommendation of the Public Works Department that the Board of Commissioners receive public testimony regarding the removal of dedication and the vacation of the public streets, alleys, and walkways within Mater Doloresa Cemetery, and if there are no objections, to grant the dedication removal and the vacation of the public streets within the cemetery. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions for Maria? We'll, we'll see you back up, probably, Phil, thank you. Okay, we have three people signed up for comment. The first person that signed up is Margaret Gander. Margaret, and if you'd like to come to the side, unless you have a visual presentation, if you go to the side. Thank you. And please introduce yourself for the record and whoever's there with you.
Hello, for the record, I'm Margaret Gander Voe.
You move that microphone really close, please.
Is that better?
So we can hear you.
Bring it closer, dear.
Closer, yeah, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Perfect, thank you.
There we go. I'm Margaret Gander Voe with Southfield Griggs, L.P.C., at 250 Church Street, Southeast, Salem, Oregon, 97301. Our office represents Santee Partners LLC, who is working in conjunction with the applicant on this vacation. We believe that this is a straightforward vacation of a somewhat forgotten cemetery plat. This vacation will allow the property records to accurately reflect-
A little closer.
...the current use of the property, and we believe that while the initial confusion on behalf of the Oregon Commission of Historic Cemeteries has been resolved, we wanted to come up and offer some historical background on behalf of the applicant and answer any questions you might have in regards to the practicality of this vacation. And I'm here with Scott Ness from Santee, who's done the majority of the legwork on figuring out what happened with the remains, and has been coordinating with the different archivists in Sublimity to figure out what has happened on this property.
For the record, I'm Scott Ness with Santee Partners at 1220 20th Street, Southeast, Suite 310, Salem, Oregon, 97302.
And if you'd like, Scott will kind of run through the quick background that we provided you in our letter, and then you can answer any questions, he can answer any questions you might have regarding that.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry to interrupt, and I should ask Phil this, and we had a work session to deal with this, and I asked for something and it hasn't come, so, and I don't think you'll be able to address it at this time, but I, I think it's proper that you know what my issue is. I live in Sublimity, a member of St. Boniface Parish, and I'm trying to keep that out of it, but here's my, here's my basic point, that I believe this is blessed ground, it's not just regular ground, so it becomes some red, overtone. For example, if we found native remains there, we'd treat it different. So I'm looking for something, either from you or in the record, that, that the archdiocese or the parish has signed off on it and is okay with it, not just that the bodies were disinterred and taken to a Catholic cemetery, but that the ground itself is clear of any, it's not, hallowed is the word we use, and I'm sorry to have to use it in a public setting, but that's how it is.
And Scott has spoken with members of the church, and they agree with this vacation. I don't know if you want a letter added to the record.
That's what I'll be looking for, either from the archdiocese or the parish, saying that they have no problems with it, it followed the form and is fine, but otherwise, I do have a problem.
I don't think that'll be a problem. I have been working with Tim Zuber over at St. Boniface, and actually spoke with Friar Paul as well, and they don't have any opposition to it, and I told them that you may want some sort of a letter or something from them as backup, so I should be able to get that.
Wonderful.
Okay, is that-
Thank you.
Good? Anything else?
If you have no further questions, we don't have additional comments.
I, I think that's the only, the only point that the Commissioner had, is good, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, the next person signed up, Steve States. Steve, welcome. Unless you have a PowerPoint, if you, if you go to the side there for us, that'd be great, thank you. And then state your name, address for the record, please.
My name is Steve States, I live at 848 Belmont Street, Salem, Oregon, and I have a little handout to pass out, if that's okay.
Sure.
To you.
I'd like to start with the first page that I handed out from the, comes from the Blue Book of the Oregon Burial Site Guide in Marion County, and it's all over. It's basically at the Archive Building, it's at the library, it's in many places, but they're talking about Mater Doloresa having been established in early 1900. And they're saying that there were at least three burials in 1978. The information from the bodies that were supposedly exhumed from there are from the 1970s, but none from 1978. So I'm working on the premise that where they say a plat of .64 acres was made for the Servite Sisters and filed on April 6th, 1964, only about a third was marked off, and then it says, "The cemetery was closed in the 1970s and the graves were removed to St. Boniface Cemetery," although the information from Weddell Funeral Home says they dug up the bodies in 1982. They're not talking about in the 1970s. So if you turn to page two, this information is somewhat redundant, but if you look at the center part that is outlined, this comes directly off the county plats, that's a .61 acre plot, and then the little flag that comes off is a, another deeded section of the Sisters of Servite set aside for their burials, and that is .03. So obviously, .61 and .03 equal the .64 that they're talking about that was set aside in 1964. So they might have said on the plat that it was Mater Doloresa, but actually, my opinion is, is that the .64 acre set aside is in addition to, because no one exactly knew where the Mater Doloresa was, and it's pretty evident, since it was done in early 1900s, that there are tons of Native Americans buried there with unmarked graves, and unmarked graves were very, very common during that time period. So the next page is basically just property information, talking about that particular pop, property on the previous page. But here's where it gets a little strange. If you look at the actual death certificate of Sister M. Romano Theresa, um, this was hard to find, this came from the archives, but she died in Multnomah County, so I had to go through a lot of records to find this. But she died in 1958, and she was buried where? In St. Boniface Cemetery in 1958. If you turn the next page, it says that Sister Romano was dug up from Mater Doloresa Cemetery in 1982, and then reburied into St. Boniface Cemetery, so how can that be? These are official records from the archives, death records. If you turn the next page, you'll see that Sister Benita Ziegler was of the Marion Nursing Home, and she died in, on March 3rd, 1962. Where was she buried? She was buried at St. Boniface Cemetery in 1962. If you turn the next page, Weddell claims, on the second entry, Weddell claims that they disinterred her from Mater Doloresa and reburied her into, into St. Boniface Cemetery in 1982. So what does it mean? Does it mean these two nuns were buried in Mater Doloresa, or in St. Boniface when they died? Dug up, buried in Mater Doloresa, and then dug up from there and put back into St. Boniface? I don't think so. I think that the more you go into this information of the 11 bodies that they claimed, that they actually moved, I think you'll find some very, very serious discrepancies, but I think that these two cases of the two sisters that were actually buried in St. Boniface, and Weddell claims that they dug them up from Mater Doloresa and reburied them into St. Boniface in 1982, I think that that should be enough information to deny this vacation of this cemetery until more information is known about it and understood from it. But this cemetery, the main Mater Doloresa, was basically established in the early 1900s, so not in 1964. That was a set aside by the Sisters of Servite. So I think that as far as the 11 bodies, I think that all that should be discounted, proven by the fact that there are death certificates for the two nuns buried at St. Boniface, and then dug up by Weddell in 1982. And then the letter to go on, from Weddell in 1986, saying, "To whom it may concern," and I think you all have a copy of that letter, talking about the bodies that were dug up, it says, "This is to state that, that all bodies buried in Mater Doloresa Cemetery located in the Marion Nursing Home grounds were disinterred and moved to St. Boniface Cemetery on December 11th and 12th, 1982." Well, that letter is dated November 6th, 1986. If you go back and look, you'll see that in 1986, the owners built two gigantic fourplexes on the Sisters of Servite property, paved over a large portion of it, converted a farm building that was on there to an additional- building that was on there to an additional 11 units, and so there's no way to determine really if there are more bodies on the property unless you use ground penetrating radar and go through the parking lots and find anomalies, et cetera. And there are many people, state agencies, the Parks and Recreation Department from the state, they have ground penetrating radar, DOT, or ODOT. ODOT has ground penetrating radar. So my belief is that not just the Sisters of Servite .64 acres should be investigated, but other grounds around should be investigated for remains of unmarked graves from Native Americans and indigents. I mean, it was very common, you know, if you don't have any money, they're not going to put a tombstone, they're going to basically dig a hole and put you in the ground somewhere. So, and, I mean, I have, let's see if I can find it. Well, there's a funeral home out of Mahama called Terrell Cemetery, and within that, they talk about, well, if the county ever buried any bodies, the chances are real good basically that they were indigents or Native Americans, and they were always in unmarked graves. The only way to determine where the bodies are is with ground penetrating radar or magnetometers or other technology, and we can do that now. When they're claiming they dug these bodies up in 1982, ground penetrating radar wasn't even available. So my suggestion is, is just to hold off on this, that there are parallels to other cemeteries that have been vacated, like Fur, Oak Fur Cemetery in Portland, where they actually went back in and found remains with ground penetrating radar of many, many, many Chinese immigrants, and they were forced to dig them up, ship the bodies back to China, and then they actually took the grounds where the bodies were buried and made it into a memorial where people could meditate, practice yoga. And I think that something like that should be done here, but I also think that this investigation with ground penetrating radar needs to go way outside the .64 acres. It needs to go around the entire grounds of Marion Estates, and there are many private companies that'll do this, but I would like to see a non-biased, non-financial interest entity like the State Heritage Foundation or someone else, ODOT, who's not financially involved with this. Do an investigation and find out if there are other remains, when they find them, they should dig them up, put them in a cemetery wherever they want, and everything will be fine. That's my suggestion, just to hold off on it. And if you want to form a committee and you want a total disinterested party to be part of it, who has absolutely no financial interest in any of this, unlike virtually everybody in the audience today has a financial interest in this, I don't, and I would be more than happy to assist in any way that I can with an investigation. Any questions?
Commissioner.
I don't know if you've gone over this list of names, and there's certainly almost every one of them a recognizable Sublimity name, I don't think that's your issue, but it gets my attention. What is this about, talking of?
Say it one more time?
This list?
Oh, that, okay. That list from, if you look, starting at grave marker 1311, that says unknown, and then you go down to 1322, starting at 1, those are the 11 names that they, Weddell claimed they dug up and reinterred. Now, if you look on the information that Weddell provided in their letter, I have it, hold on. If you look at the information that Weddell provided, you'll see that they gave names to all 11 people, but if you look at, if you look at 1311 and 1333, there are two names that they didn't even know who they were, yet they claimed that they had names. And one of them was, right above the name of Alice Lane, was another one named Nan Lane. And she, according to Weddell, they claimed they had her and dug her up, but then they are claiming that she's, that the grave was unknown. So I don't understand that. But my question for you is, looking at those names, Lane, Seber, Collins, Riley, do you consider all those family names from Sublimity?
Well, I'm sure they are, but the, when you get further, the next ones down the list.
Oh, the next ones down the list definitely are. I've been through every single grave marker in the St. Boniface Cemetery, and I absolutely found not a single Lane, not a single Seber, not a single Collins, not a single Riley. They aren't family names from cemeteries or from Sublimity, I don't know where these people came from. If the graves were dug up, if you go to St. Boniface's catalog and look, they actually have photographs of these graves, but the photographs are before they were dug up. And if you go to St. Boniface Cemetery, even though they're claiming that all these bodies are here, you have to really search hard, it's in a totally different area, but there are three headstones for Collins, Riley, and Seber, and they are off in the trees lying on top of the ground. They are not normal graves, they are not where remains were probably built. So I don't know what happened to the other headstones. And the other funny thing is, is that every headstone in Sublimity in the St. Boniface Cemetery gives a date of birth, a date of death. On all of these, at least the three, they give a year of death and a, I mean, a year of birth and a year of death. So my feeling is that they were probably indigents from somewhere, or whatever, but I'd sure like to know what happened to the three bodies that were buried in 1978, because they're definitely not part of any of these, these are all from 69 and 70. And I was not allowed to go through the count, I mean, through the archives to determine and search for the death records for any of these people because they haven't been buried or haven't been dead for more than 50 years. Now, the county, with their, with the permission of the state register, registrar, may be able to get the vital statistics people to let them search for these people and look at their actual death records, just like we did, like I did for Ziegler, and determine whether or not they were actually buried at Modern Dolorosa, or were they buried somewhere else.
And just 'cause I'm a little bit confused, there's a lot more than 11 names, but these, this is just a list that happens to include the 11 you're interested in.
Yeah, this is basically all the people, not all the people that are buried in St. Boniface, this is just one photograph I took
Okay.
of their catalog. But I wanted to get the 11 names of the people, even though there are only three headstones there, and they're off in the trees in the very, you could go take a look at them, they're in the very southwest end of the cemetery, not where there are any other graves, but they're pushed off in the trees and they're, most of them are above the ground. They're not like most cemetery plots.
Anything else?
No.
Good. Thank you, Mr. States.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
So I think that is everybody who has signed up for public comment. We have somebody else that wants to sign up. Anybody else want to make public comment?
You have a chance, you spoiled a rebuttal.
Margaret, you go, come on up.
Again, Margaret Gander for the record. We obviously don't have those documents, so we would like to propose that the record be left open, but the public hearing closed, so that we can respond to that additional evidence in detail. I'm not sure what the 1978 burials are, we don't have any details of 1978 burials. The Marion Auxiliary, Inc., which was the predecessor in interest to Arnmar, was dissolved in 1975, so I think it's unlikely that there were any burials in the cemetery after 1975. I am not sure what, what the problem is with the death records, again, we can respond to that more formally after the public hearing is closed, but it seems like what has been proposed is a burden of proof that isn't grounded in the criteria, we're just focusing on the vacation of the plat, and the additional work proposed is, seems excessive and isn't grounded in the criteria that's appropriate for this type of vacation.
Anything else?
That's it.
Hey, go ahead, Sam.
Margaret, I've lived in Sublimity for a long time, and I was just, I was just a garbage man, but I watched that, there was a, in my memory, a monument rather large, and I watched it, the, the work being done, and sorry, I didn't follow up, but I'm just a garbage man, and I'm wondering, how do they do that? How do they just say, okay, this is no more, and move them all out? So it was a problem that troubled me at the time, and I say that just kind of for the record, so you know. So I find it rather, and, and in my conventional wisdom, no proof or whatever, it was my understanding that they were, they were very old, in this case, not Native American, but nuns, kind of turn of the century buried on this location. So I need to know two things. One, I've told you already, one, that the Church and Archdiocese is fine with this, and I think I do need to know, not on the entire property, but at least on the .64 that we're talking about, that there are no other burials still, still there, I don't have better to say it. So that does say some more time and some more work. I had another point, but go ahead and I'll think of it.
Well, in our documentation that we entered, that Phil entered into the record earlier today, we kind of do a historical background
I've read that.
of this property, and it, it did look at the property prior to the old convent building being moved on to the old Hasler property, and it focused on this farmland that was then donated to, to this use by a private individual. So it was privately owned property that was used for farming prior to the 1950s. The earliest records that we have of burials being used in this cemetery is prior to the dedication of the cemetery plot, which may explain some of the inaccurate records in Multnomah County, since this wasn't a designated cemetery at the time. But there is no indication, and the Oregon Commission on Historic Cemeteries has agreed that there's no indication that this site was any more likely to be used as a burial ground in the 1900s than any other site in Marion County. So while we understand that this is a sensitive topic, we, we just want to make sure that our client is being held to the criteria that's appropriate for this vacation.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to call you Mr. Chair. It's the new year, though. Thank you for that. I do, I'm reading the historical, the, the letter from the Historical Society directed to Mr. Jones at Public Works, and, and it does say that, basically encourages the, in this case, the land is already being used for purposes with roads, sidewalks, buildings already constructed, the commission will not be blocking the removal of this dedication, but it does encourage the property owners, it says that they work diligently to confirm the history of the cemetery and the location of known burials, and it would be good for them to continue to, to basically, what does it say? This is, let's see, a plan as they move forward, being sensitive to this. So we received that letter in the record January 3.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Good. Phil, oh, did somebody else want to make?
This is the normal way we do.
Yeah, it's, it's not typical that we would bring somebody back up.
They have Bruce answer that.
It's, yeah, it's not a part of our ordinary process, but it is up to the chair.
Well, I'll allow you to come back up.
Okay, thanks.
Then you gotta let Margaret come back.
Right. I just want to reiterate one more time that the only way to find out if there were bodies buried in 1978 or before the 50-year mark, which were the bodies that they claimed they dug up and reburied at St. Boniface, the only way to find that out is to get a waiver from the state registrar through the vital statistics, and it can be done, and they will let us search and find out if these bodies were buried, when they said they were buried, and that they were buried at Modern Dolorosa, and we can then find out by searching 1978 if bodies were buried in 1978. It's the only way to prove it, and so that's what I would recommend, is that we try to get the state registrar to waive the 50-year rule and have somebody, non-biased, I don't care who, look through the death records and see how many people were actually buried here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret, do you want to come back and rebut again? Are you good?
Sure.
Just introduce yourself for the record.
We just have a question as to timing, how long is, will the record be left open if, if that's what you plan on doing?
When we get to that point.
We'll set a date certain, won't we?
You have, it's up to the board.
Right.
It's totally up to the board.
Well, yeah, we just want to make sure, so the, the proposal was that, that the testimony be closed at the hearing, and then, you know, in, in order to know when, when a due date would be for the next evidence, hearing that would be helpful, so I'm not sure that we're continuing anything
You want to introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Cameron, Helen Sorem, attorney for the applicant, address 250 Church Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon, Suite 200. Yeah, I just, on that procedural matter, that there is the intention to go ahead and ask Commissioner Brintano, request a letter from the archdiocese or the parish, try to attain that letter, and then there was new evidence submitted in the record, we want to be able to review that, respond to that in, in writing. This isn't a land use proceeding, it's not a land use decision, but we, we want to make sure that we're timely on, on that due date. It does seem to, it would probably take, I, I would recommend at least two weeks in order to, to look at those materials and ensure that, you know, we can't speak for the parish's turnaround time, so that would be our recommendation is, is a two-week period.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have got all our testimony in. Phil, did you want to come up and, is there anything else? Phil, did you want to come up and, is there anything else you wanted to say, staff? You don't have to. Okay, all right, good.
Well, my question's for Bruce. I don't quite know what I want to do here, though, whether we just continue, close the hearing. Looks like if we're expecting to receive additional evidence, that there ought to be a chance to respond. So, it seems like you continue is the better answer.
I tend to agree, Commissioner. You have expectations that there would be documentation submitted into the record, but you don't have clarity about what that might be. It's entirely at the board's discretion whether you continue. And I, in light of all the discussion, that might make sense to continue the hearing to a later date, set a deadline for submission of, of additional records or evidence. You could quote, you, you could close the record, but it, it sounds to me like you're leaning against it, and that might make sense.
I want to see some more things. So, what I'd like to do... Yes, that's fine. Now you made me forget what I'd like to do.
I was just saying that the 24th would be it.
All three commissioners.
Yeah.
So, okay, I know what it was. I, I'm happy, I'd make a motion, oh, let me ask the first. I want to continue it for two weeks, but I'd like to leave it open, that we would, if they can't get the material. For example, I know the parish council meets once a month, and I don't know if that's in this two weeks. So, I don't know, I don't know much reasonable to expect an answer from.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, you can continue, continue the hearing to a later date, and you could at that time continue it.
Can I just say until they request it?
I'm sorry.
Until the applicant requests, that's too vague.
Well, if you continue for a two-week period, then if you find out, you may need to open the hearing and then continue it again. If you want more time, you could push it beyond two weeks.
All right. So, what's two weeks?
24th.
24th.
Right.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion...
Is that the 24th?
That we continue...
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Oh, yes.
Staff's just informing me that's an appointment process.
Yeah, so go three weeks.
I won't be here. About one week. Let's see if we can press this, and then we could always continue it longer, see how fast they can get the documentation.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this hearing for one week. So, to reconvene, what's the date? You're perfect.
It'd be the 17th.
17th. That's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
And for clarity, Mr. Chair Commissioner, I advise that you address each of these two items separately. So, now, you're, you're speaking to the hearing to consider the removal of the dedication of the matter, Madre de la Rosa Cemetery. You haven't...
We've combined them, but I'd, it's both subjects I'd like to continue, so if you want to separate.
Right, you just, the only point is, you've, you've received evidence, you've received evidence on, you've opened both, you've received evidence on the de la Rosa matter. You haven't received anything with regard to the...
I thought we had. I feel like we have.
I, it wasn't clear to me that Phil had, had fully covered all of that.
So...
But I just want, I just wanted, for clarity...
Bruce, let me ask, let me ask staff. Phil, could you come back up for just a second before we make this motion, clarify? So, Phil, I just want to make sure on, because I did open both public hearings at the same time. Is there any additional information on the vacation of the streets and alleys and walkways?
No, there is, there is no additional information.
Right, so we were, we were looking at both at the same time.
That is correct.
Right.
And I consider one contingent on the other, Bruce.
I know, I understand that.
Right.
So, then if you want to make your motion for, that it applies to both matters.
I do. And if I clarify that, that is, and the motion, we continue for one week, both these public hearings, even though they're combined.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That completes our business of the day. And the next thing I'll do is read the calendar of places that we will be in the next week. Oh, did you have something else you wanted to, you're just getting your stuff, by the way? Okay, all right. Didn't want to shut you down. Thanks for being here. So, tomorrow, Thursday, we will, the 11th will be at Kaiser Marion County Meeting, breakfast at Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North. Also on Thursday at 9:30, management update here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Monday, the 15th, we will, offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Tuesday, the 16th, at 8:15, New Hire Orientation. That's always fun to have all our new employees and be able to talk to them. It's here on the fourth floor in our HR Training Room. On Tuesday at 9 o'clock, we have our calendar review here on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Also on Tuesday, the 16th, at 9:30, a work session on BLM Elkhorn Valley Parcel Acquisition and Hazard Tree Removal on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. And on the 17th, Wednesday, we will be back here at 9 o'clock in the morning to finish some work at our board sessions. How'd your week go, Commissioner?
It's all good. I think I'd rather be in Hawaii. How come we don't get that?
I'm getting ready to go to Belize here pretty quick.
Earthquake area?
Yeah, they had one down there last night, and a friend of mine that's down there said they felt it. So, they had it in Honduras, actually, so, but no damage that they were aware of.
We had some friends, relatives honeymooning there, and when I looked at the map, Belize was just as close to the earthquake as Honduras.
Yes. They felt it.
These people did not, but they'd been on the beach, and now they were in some tropical rainforest.
In Honduras or Belize?
Belize.
Oh.
But anyway.
Yeah, they were inland, because these were people on the island.
You need to close this meeting, because we're still talking.
Oh, I was just going to give this, we're still talking. Yeah, we're still open. Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. We will adjourn this meeting.